The June 27th workshop is called to order at 6:00 PM. We have a quorum with Mr. Romidis, Mrs. Woodruff, Mr. Pearson, Mrs. McLean, Ms. Duñias, and myself, Shane Hagerty. Secretary Duñias, will you please lead us in the pledges and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Thank you.
Using your electronic voting, may please have a motion on the order of the agenda. Can we just do a non-electronic voting if somebody wants to make a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the order of the agenda be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. 6-0. Thank you. Dr. De La Tora reports for the board.
President Hagerty, members of the board, guests, we do have one presentation tonight. We have a discussion on audit planning, communication, and evaluation being presented by Ms. Champagne Chi.
For President, Ms. Hagerty, Dr. De La Tora, and board members, this is Champagne. Tonight, I'm going to go over with you all on the audit planning for 2016 and 17. Before I start, there's a PowerPoint on the screen, and you have a package that looks like this. It's in the memo format that describes all the process and philosophy. Okay? First of all, I'd like to share with you all, we as a department discuss and have a renewed mission statement is to provide fair, objective, and added value audit services to our whole district. Okay? A little bit background of the department. We had reestablished in February 2002, following the Senate Bill 1842. Our audit working papers is exempt from open record requests. Therefore, we go over the audit plan with you all, and then Wednesday is an action item for you all to approve. Then, following the TEA Code 11.170, the reports are directly to the board trustees, and of course, we also work with everybody in the administration. We have four policy CFC local and CAA local, DBDR, that encompasses all the internal audit related functions for highlights and the reporting of the highlights. The way we communicate with everybody is the audit reports go to the board members, seven of you, and superintendent at the same time with the sealed package on the weekly report you all, and it's a CC to the audited department head and also the related associate superintendents. How we do that is pretty simple. Our goal, like the mission says, what we're trying to do is to ensure the operation of all the entities within the district is efficient and effective. We try to aim it, it's also the assets and facilities are adequately protected and effectively utilized. Another main component is compliance. We make sure federal, state, and district policies are followed. The way we do this is every year, like this time, we have input from all the division head and all of you to rank by the risk factors, and then we compile a list that is feasible, doable, we're pretty aggressive, but that's the way we try to accomplish as much as possible. So this is a comprehensive, independent appraisal program to do it. And what we are aiming at to make sure that we objectively evaluate based on the policy, procedure, process, and the controls. Okay? The methodology we use is fair. Every case is treated same. We make sure we follow national, international auditing standard. We make sure we check federal, state regulations and board policies. And of course, during the process, we have to apply the risk assessment and the analysis techniques. So, in another way to look at this is when we practice our audit, we try to borrow the PLC concept, except we try to use the concept of the actions taken is prudent, is legal, and is cost-effective. So that's the premises we try to follow. And the communication we have with everybody and to you all is the report goes to all of you, eight of you at the same time, and we also give to the audities, and then the associates also gets it. If we find any inappropriate acts or mismanagement, we do bring in, internally, we bring in the security directors to help out. We had gone to campus to sit down with the parents or students when the act is not properly. We try to internally have the authority internally to set the course for this. And if it's really too serious, then we do contact police department and do what we did, the DAs, to make sure the severe criminal acts are taken care of by the legal system. Okay? We try to focus again and again is during the audit process that we focus on the policy and procedures. What is the program intent? What is the policy and procedure says? And we also make sure we look at the process. We look at the workflow. So it's not hearsay. It's not what we think. It's what the policy regulation requires and what is the workflow setup, what is the process that department or the program follows. And then from there, we analyze the transactions to see if that's followed, if it's deviated, why it's deviated, and we try to work with the department or the schools first. If it's attendance area, if it's the money issues, we work with whoever is handling it first, then we let the department head, all the principals know, and then we let the associates know, and then we let you all know. So there are pretty much lots of layers of communications in there. It's not, we look at a transaction, boom, that's the exception. No, we do try to make sure. There's plenty of time given to the department, given to the schools, to let us know whether there was a misunderstanding, or there was some transactions or some backup documentation they filed in a different way, and we didn't see it the first time. Okay? So then, we also try to provide a three-year train data analysis in every report that you receive that would show you a little bit of the history, and then the actual testing, we try to focus on current. So if there's anything deviated currently, we can fix either for the PIM reporting or for the financial transactions, et cetera. System support also is very important. We look at it to see if things can be processed and should be processed by student system or by financial system, then we try not to blame on the individuals who does it, or not to say they look at their Excel extra. Those are their supporting techniques, but we try to make sure there's one system, district established, and everybody follows that system. That way, because the TIS has a very good process to back up all the datas. If we are going to a new system, conversion is taken care of by the TIS. But if we have too many subsystems, then when people changes, it might get lost, or when we do other things, then person changes, it may not continue there. That's why we focus, we emphasize again and again on the official systems. Okay? The cycle we have for any audit project we do is, we do need to do a lot of prep. We make sure we research the departmental programs, how that was designed or established, and we communicate with the department or the schools to get some preliminary information, whatever. We have the audit program developed, then we work with the schools or the department to see when reasonable time for us to go in and to do the field testing, that including collecting the backup documentation, looking at the transactions, if it follows the process or the procedures established, and if we have any data or they have any data collected, then we can exchange. Once we do the field testing, then we would see whether there was exception or not. When we say exception, meaning it did not follow the rules, or it did not follow the process, and so it comes out as not in compliance. Then, in this, we make sure before we wrap up the audit report, we make sure the department or the campuses staff has enough time and to give us the explanation why, or give us any documentation, like I say, maybe they file it in a different location or whatever, different things, so then we have that communication going on, and then we finalize the audit reports on that, right? So once audit report is issued, it goes to eight of you and to them, then they have six weeks. Usually, we are pretty, meaning we don't ask them to give us a report on Friday because we know Friday would not tend to have time to take a look, so we try to set it as Monday as a deadline, so then they have enough time to do it. Once we have the correction plan we receive, we try to work with everybody to see if that addressed the deficiencies found. Okay? If there's any correction of the exception they could make right there, then we make. But the action we're trying to look for is, does it address so it would prevent the same thing occur again? That's the correction plan we'll focus. Then, three to six months, usually it's about six months or eight months, we try to work with the school calendars. If there's testing, then we kind of wait. If there's other things, we can wait. Then we do the follow-up audit. In the follow-up audit, we try to focus on what was found in the initial audits, and is there any, how the correction plan is carried out by verifying some transactions. So if the correction plan implemented and it's followed, so that means the deficiency was addressed. So then we expect to see no exceptions. But sometimes we do see exceptions, and then we continue to work with everybody. Okay? Either it's the system, or it's the human situation. Here is a quick summary of what we have for '15 and '16. We had 11 audit projects in progress. Now, we just realized there's two more we need to add to it. We have one correction plan is under review, meaning we received the correction plan already, and I'm working with the department or associate to make sure that we all are comfortable about the action it's going to take, and the information is provided. We have 10 follow-up audits that currently scheduled to do. Thirty audits were completed, and we have 23 hotlines in this school year. In summary, we have 34 schools audited, eight of them, not eight of them. In addition, the eight academic programs we review, and two in finance, three in HR, one is related to finance and operation, three in operation, and one is the superintendent's office. I have to introduce my staff to you because without them, we wouldn't be able to accomplish so much. First of all, it's our department secretary, Dolores San Diego. She is very good, not only the usually administration staff, she's our database manager, she's our scheduling manager, she makes sure the paper we receive is timely, so she's a debt collector as well. She calls everybody to make sure that our correction plan is received. She's not that bad to come up with. We have the newest member, Jackie Salas. She's our senior auditor, and she has been with the audit firms, local big audit firm, I cannot say that name right. Yes, the company, so many years. And we have our ex-marine, Lorenzo, he's our staff auditor. He goes in with the discipline, so it's very good to impose. So, I have very good team of employees, very well, and we have two interns, one vacant, we're trying to fill it, but during the summer is very hard. So, Gino is the one, I think he's one week old, yeah, so, but I don't ask him to stay because they have classes to go. So these are the team help us to accomplish lots of these. Now, only '16 and '17, in your attachment, you have a detailed list of the, on the second page, you have a detailed list of the, what we compiled from all of your input. I did have to make an adjustment from the first version because there were just too many projects that we had to do. So, I counted mostly, we will have 15 new projects, and we will have 17 follow-up to do. These do not count campus audits. So we have 15 campus audit. We already finished three of them, so we have 12 going on, and we will have nine transition schools that for fixed assets to verify. So we plan to do that probably throughout the fall and early spring. Once they settle in, then we go verify those. So that's roughly what we have for the '16 and '17 plan. In addition to this, we try to follow a very economic way of training as we attend task boards, internal auditors workshop. That one is every year once. Host usually, if it's not in Austin, Houston, Dallas, it's around those areas, and that workshop gives us a very good update about a day and a half on that. Other trainings we try to do is follow TEAs and other AICPA or Texas CPA Society or IMA Institute of Management Accountants that brings us a different aspect of business process, business organizations, and also many updates that they provide. Sometimes, the subject might not look directly related to audit, but it gives us some abreast of the new business development or new regulations going on, and that's the way we do. So, with your support, everybody's cooperation, it's guaranteed for districts' success. And like I always say, don't kill the messenger. We're just the messenger. We try to pass the assessments as fair as possible. Any questions?
Ms. Champagne?
Yes.
When I was reading through one of the follow-up audits, and I'm sorry, I left my stuff at the house as I was walking out the door, so I don't remember which one it is for sure, but it was one of the follow-up audits that you sent out in the last two to three, three weeks, I guess.
Okay.
And on one of them, it said that the CAP measures were apparently working, that they had, the measures that they had put in place to correct whatever problem it was that they weren't, but it didn't seem effective, I think that was the word.
Yes.
And, but then at the end, it says case is closed. So my question is, what happens when the measures are not effective?
Okay. We, this is the communication and evaluation part that we discussed before. When we have an audit, it's like a point-of-the-time assessment of the organization, of the unit, of the process, of the conditions. So, when we say, for example, we did Constand Ober School, so then we found, based on the finance process, then we have found the fixed assets, spot checks. Some of those were not found, or were not in the right place, or were not recorded. So then, the schools probably usually gives us a correction plan, mention that there will be a measurement taken, either the principal, the assistant principal will work with the staff to do a period, to review their assets, updates, locations, et cetera. Okay? So then, when we go in to do a follow-up audit, so in correction plan, we accept this because this is an action they propose to do, they will do. So when we go in to do a follow-up audit, then we check, is the record updated? Is the items found or not found? Okay? So, sometimes, we still find exceptions. So then, our conclusion would be, it's not fully effective. Because if it's effective, then it should have no exception. Okay? So now, why do we close the audit? Because we do need to have the cycle closed. Otherwise, there is never ending. Does that make sense to you?
It does, but do they not have to put the effective, I mean, put something in place that's effective? Because this, this wasn't about locating something, it was some practice that was not effective.
I think what we, I remember, we have this school year, the not effective thing we found would be like, mostly would be the student coding, teacher taking attendance timely. I think those two, and the fixed assets. I think those two, those three. Oh, I think that another area is the cash management. Okay? Cash management includes fundraising management, that usually, we often find exceptions because we expect, when they do the cash management, when they do the fundraising, we expect them to follow finance guidelines, meaning you need to have the fundraising, collect money, need to have backup receipts, deposits, payments, need to have the receipts. But, we do find deviation in the follow-up audit, and it could be the new secretary, it could be different fundraising, new sponsors, there are many different reasons. And...
Connie, so one way of thinking about it is that there are times when our systems, our practices, our procedures need to be addressed, and then there are times when you've got to accept that human error, deviation from what people are supposed to do is going to occur, and then that, I think, is a different, that has to be handled differently. It's almost pragmatic in terms of someone who's just dismissive, or doesn't want to do it the way we've asked them to do it, or hasn't been trained. That would be our responsibility, but I think the distinction is when it is a result of human error, whether it's intentional or unintentional. I think at some point, you have to accept that with 7,000 employees, some of them aren't going to always adhere to the practices and the processes that we have in place. If we don't have those practices and processes in place, then it's on us. Is that a fair...
And this also is, that's why we have the annual audit plan, because you do need to give time for the implementation, training, and the execution of the actions. So, we close that, but in the following year or two, then we can come back.
Thank you, and I apologize to the board for that. That's my fault.
Mrs. McLean?
Hi Champagne.
Yes.
I've got three questions, and we've got three minutes to answer them, okay?
Okay.
So you're on the timer here. One, before, and I haven't asked you about it here recently, you, whenever you went to the campuses, you were ensuring that the hotline posters were visible and that they were at each campus. Are you still doing that?
We, every year, at the beginning of school year, we do... We, every year, at the beginning of school year, we do send out the new posters to every school for them to see. So far, many schools I've visited, I do see the postings. I should take notes, but I didn't take notes. I will make sure we take notes.
All right.
Okay.
Question two, peer review. Have you been involved in any of that recently?
Peer review, I have been working with, we have one group called North Texas Consultation of Internal Audit Review, something like that, very long. I do have a quarterly meeting with them through Skype, but the computer is not very working. So, I do keep up with them, but we're not able to schedule one for us because everybody is so swamped, and I am in the agenda for rotation.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question, and we still have a minute and a half, travel reimbursements. Whenever I was looking here at your hotline log, there was one item, there was a concern about travel reimbursements, and in the response, you put on there that that was going to be added to this upcoming audit.
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay.
Yes, it is. Yes.
We're under the three minutes.
Yes.
Ms. Duñez?
Yes, I have five questions.
Yeah.
And like Ms. McLean said, we've got less than two and a half, I think.
I'll try.
By the time I get started. The same, you have a plan, a new plan, and with the bond audit, you need to come up with us, with more, with details, with all that we're going through and everything. How can you give us details? How soon can you give us details with the bond? Have you started that yet?
Now, yeah, we, we are, there are two items. One, the bond audit firm, consulting firm that we propose, we went through IFQ, and it's in the action item, so Wednesday for, before your action. For the staff, we're still working with HR. For some reason, we didn't have a good pool of applicants, so I'm still working with HR. Hopefully, we leave it open, and hopefully by, after the holidays, to see if we can get more, better qualified people. So far, we don't really have good, good candidates. So, what I just listed to you earlier, I forgot to clarify that, is that did not count bond audits. So, hopefully, once we have this staff on board, I hope August or September, so probably by September, I could give you guys a little bit more detail about the plan, the project, if we need to make any adjustments.
Okay. Well, I guess with the, I was going to ask you, and have you started with the bond auditor? The one we were supposed to get hired?
No, that's what I say.
Yeah, and that's what you just answered right now. And then also with the, with the other staff, that you were wanting the part, I guess, the students or?
We hire one student, another one is vacant because the one, because we took a little bit longer, so she took another offer, so she's not coming back. So, we start over again, and it's December, so there are not many students, so hopefully we can, as soon as school starts, we can get another one.
I was going to ask you, are you getting the same documentation that we are getting for the bond?
The bond, I, because it's not in the audit, no, I don't get, other than the board book, I don't get other things.
Dr. De La Torre, is it possible that maybe what we get, they can get, so they can get maybe started with the documentation on the bond?
Sure.
For, just for the record, so that we can have at least some of what we're going, because we haven't, we've already started, I guess, some of the projects with the fields and all this, and we need to know what's going, what's being audited, and then with the new projects that are coming in with the summer. I guess Riverside also got started, right?
It's the athletic enhancements, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Romides, I just need you to sign up again.
I'm sorry?
I just need you to sign up again.
Oh.
Champagne?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I don't remember where I read that at, but I noticed that in somewhere, you were going to compare the audit plans that we have compared to other school districts or comparable districts. Did you get a chance to look at any of that?
The audit, even the department structure?
Yes, ma'am. Well, not only the department, but also the audit plan themselves.
Oh, I, I was, okay, I didn't realize the audit plan. I don't know I would be able to get audit plan, but the department structure, I believe we could get. The audit plan, I'm not sure, but I will try.
Okay. I was just curious about that, and I guess the next question is, would be for Ms. Leeper on that. Ms. Leeper, with your background on audit plans, are you familiar with that, and can you offer some insight, or perhaps addition, that we might want to include going forward?
I don't have specific recommendations about the audit plan for next year, because I haven't seen it.
And I apologize, I know I'm surprising you.
No, that's okay. With regard to other districts' audit plans, I have seen some out there. In reviewing the departments that are under my purview right now, I've been looking at various organizational structures, and I noticed that I think Dallas publishes their audit plan. So, I'll look and share whatever I find with Champagne.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Did it come out? Oh. Yeah, I just want to give one. It's not working. Is it? Okay. I have one more question here that, let me see. Can, could it be possible that maybe in sometime in September, you can come back with us, with the information?
Yes.
On the bond audit?
Sure. I think we should be able.
Can, probably maybe, would that be too soon, or it's just a, can probably maybe, September the eighth?
I think it's doable, yeah.
For the record, can we be possible for the September the, is that okay with the board?
I think you all need to decide.
To have, I guess, a special meeting for us to bring back what you just, you know, and help you bring back in the documentations, especially on the bond, and instead of having everything piled up, and you can go right along with it.
Okay.
Now, relatively speaking, we will have invested very little relative to the aggregate bond. I think the board needs to understand that Champagne's role is limited. You're about to approve a bond auditor on Wednesday. I don't know that giving them 60 days to conduct an audit would be fair to them. They'd have to become familiar with the bond program very quickly, and you also have a neutral, third-party external auditor that this board works with. So, we're going to audit this bond at three different levels all year, but I don't believe that there's anything of significance by September eighth.
Well, can it be a documentation that you have, what you brought planned for us today, bring back in September the eighth? What you've accomplished then?
If we are, I think, okay, if we are talking about come back and have a workshop to go over the plan.
Right.
Or any adjustments in the plan or the process, I think September eight, I don't have any problem. If you all would like it, we can do that, just in the plan and the process side of that. The actual audit result, we will see how far we are by then. Will that be okay?
We can do that. We can give an update, much in the same way that we will give the Bond Oversight Committee an update, and go through each of the projects that we've initiated, where we've made the investment, whether or not we've come in under budget, over budget, whether they're on time to complete the project when promised, and how much we've expended to date. We can do something like that.
Our board meeting's on the 14th by the, by the eighth.
We find that if you're not here, there's less questions.
That's a good answer.
You're talking about September the eighth?
The 14th may work out better.
That's the...
You know what? Can you just sign back up again real quick?
Sign back in.
Click here, just click here.
I second the, I second the eighth. But my thoughts on Ms. Duñez's recommendation, I see that she's very interested in getting an update. I think September would be way too soon. We're, we haven't even, you know, formally approved the, this external bond audit, you know, firm to be part of this whole oversight. Champagne is just now getting her plan approved by us on Wednesday. You know, September is way too fast. I think maybe by the end of the year, possibly, you'd have some more information. I think September is not adequate time to get anything.
So, I think I need to get a clarification. My understanding was to give an update on the audit plan, including bond audit plan, for if there's any change over the process we're going to take, or the plan, basically the plan and the process, and how we communicate.
You could just send that to us, right? I mean, in our weekly packet, I mean, you don't need to have a presentation regarding.
But it's usually the plan that you just presented to us right now, the new plan, right?
Yes.
Can we have something by September since?
Yeah, I think...
Because a lot of times, when we get into the reading, we sometimes don't understand the facts, and we need to ask questions. We can't ask questions, not unless you're going to get in trouble again by calling us, or we call you. We can't contact each other, which I don't mind you calling me at all.
I don't think anyone will get in trouble.
For the record.
Let's go ahead and, Mr. Rosales.
I think, just for the record, I think we're talking about two different animals here. You're talking about an audit, and a review of the processes and what has happened, and what we're asking, and I am in, I'm in unison with you, we need to at least bring an update in numbers, Dr. De La Torre. We've got the 431 million, of that, we've spent 800,000, because this, these are the, these are the things. Once we get into the latter part of the year, where you're really getting into the, into the processes, then that, in my opinion, that's when we need to have the audits be right on top of things.
Sure. I just do want to remind the board that in August, you've got a team of attorneys coming from Tasbo to address bond management, board bond management, and ethics in terms of what's appropriate to request and what's appropriate to receive. So, maybe once we get some direction from these attorneys in August, it'll give us a better idea of what we have to provide to the board on a regular basis. Does that work?
Well, and I agree with that. I'm just saying, as a board member, and we're looking at, I think, from my perspective, is the transparency that we want to continue for the public, and we're talking here, numbers. We're not talking about doing things illegally, morally, unethical. It's just where are we, and then we can listen to these gentlemen come in here, and then we go from there.
And we also have the Bond Oversight Committee, I think, scheduled for September, July? So, they'll get a complete update, and hopefully, they can continue to be delegates and ambassadors to their constituents and their community, but we certainly can do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Duñez is to sign up to speak, but that's, that'll be your third round, so we have to vote.
I think we, that's when I was outspoken, because of the, microphone's not in, the computer not working very well, I guess, we keep on pressing and it gets stuck.
Cool. In that case, does anyone else have?
Can I get a clarification? So, do I need to have a workshop on September eighth, or no?
If so, we'll certainly let you know beforehand, but right now, no, I wouldn't.
There's no meeting September eighth. It's September 14th. And we can put something together, it'll look a lot like what we've shared with the Bond Oversight Committee. It could be done first as a board communiqué, and then the board can decide whether or not they'd like to have a presentation, or whether we do well enough on the board communication in providing the kind of information that's helpful to you to not warrant a presentation. Ultimately, we serve at the pleasure of the board, but if you'll give us an opportunity to put something together in writing first, that covers every one of the bond projects that we've initiated, we'll put numbers to it, we'll put them in order relative to completion and timeline, and then we'll get that out to you, and then we can decide whether or not a presentation is needed on September 14th. That work?
Yes, sir. If no one has any more questions, I appreciate your presentation.
Good job, Champagne.
Okay, thank you.
We will now review the June 29th agenda as listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting, and we do have agenda item number 11 pulled for an action item, because there was changes made, and they're written in blue. Hopefully, we have a chance to check them out before Wednesday. But if you have any other items you wish to pull, please let me know as we go through. We have consent item number one, to approve YSD contract 2016-0418 with Region 19 for continuation of the Texas Student Data System Initiative by the Texas Education Agency during the period 2016-17 school year, in the amount of $2,000 from local funds. Questions? Number two, accepted donation from Blackboard Inc. in the amount of $20,000 for the 2016-17 convocation event.
I have a, well, actually, I'd like to pull that one. I'd like to get Mr. Safi on that, on legal, for the amount, being that we're going through the bond and receiving some kind of money and everything like that, and what we were aware of in the situation.
This is unrelated to the bond in any way.
It doesn't matter. We can be accepting gifts as we were aware of Mr. Safi.
Did we have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Safi?
Well, can we have Mr. Safi? I like to pull it. That's what I'd like to do. I like to pull it. I like to hear it from him directly.
Number three, approve amendment number three to YSD contract 94-001-1 with El Paso Community College to provide test preparation materials for the operation of the nursing program at Bel Air High School during the 2016-17 school year, in an amount not to exceed 15,000 from local funds. Number four, approve amendment number one to YSD contract 2016-0195 with El Paso Community College to provide clinical experience and learning opportunities for EMT certification to students in the Bel Air Center for Health Professions Magnet Program during the period of August 1st, 2016, to July 31st, 2017, in the amount of $56,690 from local funds.
Okay, Mr.? I need to abstain from three and four.
Okay.
Just that involves, four involves my program, so.
Yes, sir. You just pull number three and four also.
Yes, sir.
Number five, approve an increase in the amount of 250,000 for YSD solicitation 215001 CSP abatement services, changing the facility, changing the estimated annual amount to 750,000 from various funds. Ms. McLean?
I just have a follow-up question to my sent-in questions. With the response, it said here that when it occurs on a bond-related project, bond monies will be utilized, this Thomas Manor, not a bond-related project.
Good evening, Mr. Hagerty, Dr. De La Torre, members of the board. Yes, ma'am. Thomas Manor will be one, the TLCC will be one, the rebuild at Riverside High School will be one. Those are all bond projects that will you, we have to abate, and we'll use bond money.
But wasn't on the backup sheet, it said that local monies were going to be used for those, or am I confused?
No, ma'am, not for those. For those bond-related projects, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Duñez?
Yes, my question was, I hear the, see here that it's about 2,500, 2,050 on the, on Thomas Manor, but the other 500... on the, on Thomas Manor, but the other 500, what is it gonna be used as, or what schools are gonna be, are you gonna utilize that money on?
Okay, those will be those three that I'd mentioned, and also, we're doing Riverside Middle School, the abatement, remember, we're gonna have to go in this summer and do some structural repair, so it's for all those projects.
Okay, so it's Riverside, Thomas Manor, and?
The TLCC, and then also for Riverside High School, because we're going wireless, and we're introducing those units, we're gonna have to get up into the ceiling and do some abatement there.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good with number five?
Yes.
Number six, approve award of additional list of vendors for the supplier base for YSD solicitation 216041 RFQ Professional Mentoring Coaching, Part 7, during the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, for 250,000, which includes original parks 1 through 6 from various district funds.
Um, I have a question. Oh, it doesn't turn off.
Yes, ma'am.
Got it? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I'm having problems with my little computer here. Uh, is this the vendors that we're getting? Is that what it is? Different vendors?
Yes, what's my, it's my understanding is we're adding extra vendors that are providing instructional support services for our teachers at the campuses, so it's just adding, making the list of vendors, larger number of vendors that we have available.
Oh, okay. I thought we were gonna stop that, no?
My understanding that we just add as, as vendors come.
As go, okay, well, that, okay, that's fine, okay.
Sorry, I went down wrong.
You okay?
Number seven, approve award of YSD solicitation 216039 CSP library books during the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, possibility of three one-year extensions for $400,000 from various district funds contingent upon Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties. I was thinking about it. Number eight, approve YSD contract 2016-0438 with Isleta del Sur Pueblo to provide highly qualified professional development and transitional services and sharing of tribal student information during the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, and no cost to the district. Number nine, approve YSD contract 2016-0437 with the City of El Paso to act as assessor-collector for the district and to determine the total assessed value and taxable value of property, effective when signed by the city to August 31st, 2017, and shall be automatically renewed thereafter, on a year-to-year basis, and remain in effect until terminated by mutual consent of the parties, or by effective written notice of any party, in the amount of approximately $50,000 from local funds. Ms. Duñez?
Yes, I just have a question. Is this with the county or the city?
The contract is with the city.
City?
Hmm?
Because it mentioned a little bit of the county, since...
The county also provides assessor-collector services, and so there's a reference, there's an amendment referencing the county. It's unrelated to us, but it is an amendment to the overall contract.
Okay, thank you.
Number 10, approve an increase in the amount of $40,148 for awarded YSD solicitation 215036 RFP-RB2 district repair projects of limited scope, rebid to, changing the original not to exceed 24,999 per project amount, to 65,147 for the Riverside High School ceiling tile replacement and 30 classrooms from bond funds, this project only. Number 11 was pulled to be an action item. Action item number one, if you have any questions, approve award of YSD solicitation bond 06 RFQ BP 08 Del Valle Middle Mission Valley Elementary Combo School for 25,000 for pre-construction services and 2.75 for the cost of construction from bond funds, contingent upon final negotiations, legal counsel review with final contracts, including guaranteed maximum price and estimated cost of construction presented at a subsequent board meeting, and Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties. This is Woodruff.
Yes, um, you know, I, um, I read the, the BC, and I read all of the, the stuff that was written on this. I think what I'm just looking for is a little more, a little more comfort, because that, you know, the, the schools that are built on that property are, are, you know, not that old, and they have some structural problems, and so I'm just asking to make sure that, that our, the company that's chosen is very well-equipped to handle this issue, and so that we don't come back in however many years and have the same issues.
Yes, ma'am, and that is a great comment, and we have had that conversation with these people multiple times, because we want to build buildings that'll last the next 50 years, not 25 years. So the people that we're gonna recommend are very competent, they have a long history of, of successful projects, and plus the ones that maybe they'd need to gone back, there's never been a problem going back and fixing it, you know, if there was an issue with the school. But great reputation, lots of experience, and there was a savings to the district.
And they do feel like that they can handle two huge projects at the same time?
Yes, ma'am, we had that conversation, and we asked that question, that was the exact question that we asked, and, yes, ma'am, we feel very confident, and based on their experience, just not a great presentation, which they did, but also based on their experience.
Thank you.
Number two, approve award of YSD solicitation 216034 RFQ bond, 2015 bond-related contract audit advisory services during the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, with the possibility of four one-year extensions, not to exceed $350,000 from bond funds, contingent upon final negotiations and legal counsel review. Number three, approve YSD cooperative requisition with Avaya Inc. to install a safe and secure entry system at all district school facilities, in the amount of $608,574.15 through purchasing cooperative from various district funds, contingent upon final negotiations and legal counsel review. Number four, approve award of YSD solicitation 216049 RFP School Visitor Management System during the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017, with the possibility of three one-year extensions for $100,000 from various district funds, contingent upon final negotiation and legal counsel review. Number five, approve award of Phase 1 of awarded, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I just have a follow-up question to Mr. Pearson's answer. Uh, there's a, a million, too, that's allocated for the district-wide secure entry system was the answer. Now, are we gonna combine the, those two? Is that?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be the amount, it'll be a little over $700,000 for that project, yes.
Now, are we gonna need additional, like, doors or anything else to?
No, ma'am, that's the...
To make it safe and secure?
That's the turnkey, it's the whole thing. The installation, getting it set up, everything, the wiring, everything, that'll be the total amount.
And, and an additional question, on that one camera that I had asked about, the ocularis, we have a one-year upgrade on that one camera, how does that gonna work past the one year? What's the plan there?
Okay, and I'm gonna ask Gloria Chavez, she's been on that committee, and she can give you a more specific answer, but it's gonna integrate with the current systems that we have, but if I could have Gloria come up and be able to answer specifically your question.
Good evening, um, President, I forgot who the president is, President Hagerty, members of the board, Dr. De La Torre. Past the one, um, the one year, it, it's only required for a one-year contract, for one-year licensing for the camera, and that is to talk to the, um, the video recording system that we have and the, um, the video surveillance that's in the security office, that, so that that is licensed to talk to that system.
Right, but what, what do we do after that one year? Do we just continue using that equipment, or?
It, it will be a recurring cost for the camera as a one-year license, a yearly renewal license, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And also, just to add on to that, there'll be a license fee for the visitors' management system. It's called hall pass is what we're recommending, and there'll be a small fee that the camps will have to pay. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with the system, they come in with their ID, they'll swipe their ID, and it'll tell us right away, should they not be there, is sex, you know, gives us all sorts of information very quickly, and if everything's good, there'll be, a pass will be printed out with their picture. It's a really unique system, very nice system. We're excited to get it into schools.
Oh, I am, too. Thank you.
Number five, approve award of Phase 1 of awarded YSD solicitation bond 03 RFQ BP 15 Parkland Middle School addition and renovations for 761,491 from bond funds towards a guaranteed maximum price, with the remaining packages totaling the guaranteed maximum price and estimated cost of construction presented at a subsequent board meeting. Number six, approve the internal audit plan 2016-17. Moving on to policy action items. It'll be number seven, approve Tasbe and Isleta recommended 2016-17 changes to the student code of conduct.
Mr. Hagerty, if I could jump in real quick, the reason we're asked to pull that one is that Mr. Safi's firm went ahead and reviewed the student code of conduct, the recommendations from Tasbe, and he made three small recommendations, which we have included on your blue sheet. We got that over the weekend, but we wanted to make sure that we incorporated those into the student code of conduct, because it's gotta be approved by the board. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the changes?
So is that, is that number seven?
It'll be number seven. Policy action items, number one, adopt Isleta-specific revisions to policy FEA local attendance, compulsory attendance. Number two, approve the adoption of Isleta-specific revisions to policy CDC local, other revenues, grants, and private sources. Number three, adopt Isleta-specific revisions to policy EIE local academic achievement, retention, and promotion. We'll go into close executive meeting, where we'll review evaluation of the internal auditor and consult with legal counsel regarding El Paso Electric Company rate case. Come back out for our second action items. Number one, consider and take possible action regarding the El Paso Electric Company rate case. There are no questions, then we got a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion second, and we adjourn at 7 o'clock.
See, Robert, we need to get your act together, we don't have to stay here.
It was me, it was.
Yeah, it was pretty good, I thought.